You want to let the public in?
Okay, Mr. Mr. Chairman, we are on the air.
Thank you. Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the public meeting of the Planning Board of the Township of West Orange. Notice that this meeting was given to the Township Clerk and posted on Township Bulletin Board and Township Website Calendar and sent to the West Orange Chronicle and the Star Leisure. This meeting has been properly noticed in to the public in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. No new matters will start after ten thirty P M. May I ask everybody to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic. Please be seated. The next regular planning board meeting will be held April twelfth, two thousand twenty-three at seven thirty P M via Zoom. Roll call, please. Yamalat.
Mister Cardoza.
Present.
Mister Guerino.
Present.
Mister Jensen.
Present.
Mister Klein.
Here.
Mister Morgan.
Here.
Mrs. Meraldo.
Here.
Council President Tommy Williams. Council President. She's here. Council President. A marker, I'm a marker as the present because you see her, but I know she's not.
She's here, she just is not.
Yeah, Mister Wilks, sorry, Mayor Susan McCartney.
Present.
Mister Wilks.
Here.
Doctor Bago.
Here. Did you call Mister Alper?
Ah, Mister Alper.
First of all, I didn't.
I'm sorry. One of us is stuck, and I hope it's not me. Hello?
I don't hear you.
Oh, okay, good.
I just froze, she was saying something.
Oh, is does Mister Alper here?
No, he's not. He was saying, he said he was not available today.
Got you. Okay. I got it.
Mister Greigle here?
Mister Greigle will not be here.
He's not, he's across the whole town.
Okay.
Get that. I'm sorry, you're breaking up a little, Mayor.
Which one of us is breaking? Is it me that's breaking up?
No, they may have.
Oh. Okay.
I'm just curious, are we proceeding without Paul?
Yes.
Okay, do we? We don't have a sub. We're just going to rerun this report?
Correct. We have a report.
I'm bowing out here because I have a conflict, so I'll come back on when you do the ordinance review.
Okay, for the record, Miss McGovern is bowing out and Miss Burney is going to be Alice is going to be the attorney for this portion of the meeting.
And Council President Williams is present.
Welcome, Council President.
Thank you.
Okay, we're all here. Uh, there's really, Mister Hess is not here, is that correct?
But I, we have Zaya Beth, is she gonna be commenting? I could swear her in.
Who who's? Yes, yes, please swear her in.
Miss Carvalho, do you swear or affirm the testimony we have to give you this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name and position.
Sure, Sagabat Carvalho, Assistant Municipal Engineer for the Township of West Orange.
Thank you.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. So right now, we have a Courtesy Review Application PB twenty-three oh three, Essex County, Francis Byrne Golf Course, eleven hundred Pleasant Valley Way Block five, one fifty-seven dot oh one, Lot eleven, Zone R two. Mister Flader for the applicant.
Good evening. I want to say first, thank you very much for getting together at this special meeting and in particular, Mrs. Adams was very helpful in helping to arrange this. County was very anxious to get going for a number of reasons with the contractor to do this project, so we really appreciate your making all these arrangements to have a special meeting for us.
We appreciate everything that the county does, so it's great to work with you.
Well, thank you. My name is Mark L. Flader, F L E D E R. I'm one of the senior partners at the Connell Foley Law Firm in our Roseland office, otherwise referred to by me as our main office, probably because I'm there. I've been before this board any number of times, so some of you may recognize me. I've represented the county on numerous Courtesy Review applications, not only in West Orange, but in many other places. In fact, just this past Monday evening in front of the Newark Central Planning Board, indeed, by also a Zoom hearing. That we we have submitted the drawings and a letter that was done by Stephen K., who I'll introduce in just a second. It was the golf course architect that has designed the parts of this project. As I'm sure you all know, the actual golf course has been there for a very long time. So these are really, with all due respect to Mister K., these are really relatively speaking, very minor additions to the golf course proper, which obviously involves a lot of land and a lot of golf course things. So we have given you the letter that was dated March fourteenth, the address to the township from Mister K. That explains the project. We had some photographs of what's proposed. But basically, there are two things. One is, and what we call a new pavilion, it's an open sided structure that does have a roof. It will be located right near the just south of the existing clubhouse. What's off of Pleasant Valley Way. And the other is, we refer to it as a maintenance storage shed, which will be used for equipment that the golf course folks use routinely, which are mowers and all kinds of other things to be used into that storage shed. So I'd like to introduce the Stephen K., who's a registered landscape architect in New Jersey. Mister K., are you with us?
I'm here.
There you go. Thank you. Okay.
Mister K. Oh, I'm sorry, we've.
Don't go right ahead. I assume that you'd like to swear him in and then have him tell you his full name and his address.
Yes, thank you. Mister K., please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give you this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Please state your name and professional address.
My name is Stephen K. My address is six six five Saint Andrews Drive, Egg Harbor City, New Jersey, oh eight two one five.
Right. Mister K., presently licensed, but it's in New Jersey, and if so, in what field?
In the field of landscape architecture, and I basically limit my practice to ninety-eight percent golf design.
Very well. And is your license in New Jersey current?
Yes.
Very well. So Mister Chairman, I'm going to offer him Mister K. as an expert on behalf of Essex County.
We we accept him as a licensed landscape architect in the state of New Jersey. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Okay, Mister Mister K., um, as we've explained to you informally before this evening, this is a Courtesy Review. The board has seen both your letter and also the handful of drawings and renderings that were sent with us. Could you very briefly explain what is the nature of the project? What are the actual things that are contemplated to be built?
Well, besides the renovation of the golf course, which which you mentioned, Mark, we are proposing to put in an open pavilion, sort of like a picnic shelter, but a very nice one over by the maintenance building where the current maintenance building is not large enough to store equipment. You might, if you drive by and sort of look in, you'll see a lot of equipment is stored outside, which is not good for the equipment, rain and snow. So we're building a, what we call the storage structure, shed, storage shed, that it's not going to have water, not going to have electricity. It's just basically what I would call cold storage, not refrigerated, just cold. That's going to be behind the maintenance building that's there now. Also by the pavilion, there's a small little shed that's going to be built to store the tables and chairs that would go out in the pavilion when there was an event.
Very well. Could you tell the board the size and the maintenance shed?
And then we'll get to the. If we could, could you share the screen and I could go to the drawings because that'll remind me exactly what some of these sizes are? Can somebody open that up for me?
Mister Fagan, can you open that up?
There we go.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's perfect.
All right. Okay, so first, just some photographs. This is the exact pavilion that is at Week Wake right now that we built a few years ago. That's going to be put in at Francis. It's the exact same size approximately. And I'm going to go to another plan off the top of my head. I think it's sixty-five or seventy by a hundred, something like that.
Mister K., we're looking at the document that you sent.
Yes, this is the, this is the letter. This is the letter that I gave, I handed in that was dated March fourteen.
And as we look at this document, is the picture on the left that you're speaking to with the.
Here, where my cursor is moving around, Week Wake Golf Course. So this pavilion, open air pavilion, like you said, Mark, this is where tables and chairs would be during an event and outing. And you could see it will also have electricity for lights and for fans. But there's no sides. Sides are open.
Right, and it does have a roof.
Does have a roof, yeah.
Very well. Could you tell the board what it sits on?
It'll sit on a concrete slab, just a simple. I think it's a six inch concrete slab with sub base underneath it. Just, it's a basic, simple. I don't like to use the term, but a lot of people used to use the term in the old days, just a picnic shelter. They don't call it that anymore, but that's what they used to call it a long time ago.
Okay, and and finally, is this something that gets built onsite? I'm talking about the structure itself, or does it come pre-made, so to speak?
Some of it, some of it is is pre-done, but the majority of it, eighty-five percent of it is put together onsite.
Put together, very well. Okay, if we switch over to the to the picture on the right, is that the maintenance shed?
That is, that is the storage maintenance shed. It'll have three garage doors, a regular door to come in, some lights on the side, windows on the side to let some light in. Again, it's not going to have electricity, so this way some light could come in during the day when when a maintenance person walks into it. It's just a simple building to get the equipment out of the weather.
You remember the approximate size? I know it's on your drawings, but.
Uh, well, we, when we, when I, if I could get to the drawing, I'm thinking it's something like forty by eighty.
Very well. And finally, what does it sit on?
That also sits on a just a concrete slab.
As well. Okay, would it be fair to say that the public doesn't go into the maintenance shed?
No, this is only for for employees on the Maintenance Committee and the upper staff of the golf course.
Very well. On on the site plan, which I believe was attached to your letter as well, your fourteenth letter. Am I correct that this little tiny storage shed that's adjacent to the pavilion is indicated with just a little square?
Yeah, I want to make sure what you're seeing right now.
Can you identify the document, please?
This was the the blueprints, if I call them blueprints, that I handed in to Jamalat with with the the check that I left off when I left the letter. This was twenty-four by thirty-six inch plans. I think I also left some eleven by seventeens, which would have been easier to look at.
Okay, but the ones that are here now, can you tell us when that you you were somebody from your office created these and that?
Yeah, I, I, a couple of my people created these here again. You see, you see this plan with my cursor moving around, right?
Right.
All right, okay. So here, here's the pavilion again. This here is a plan view. Here's the existing clubhouse. There's the putting green. Here's part of the parking lot. This is where this pavilion is going to go. Right?
And immediately to its left.
Can you say the date that the plans were written?
Oh, it says, it says right there. I'll make it a little bit bigger, proposed golf course pavilion.
No, on the right side, it says B and G. Can you say the date that these plans were drawn, the record?
Oh, look, I'm sure they're here.
On the right side of the screen.
Well, it's also in, it's also on the date of the file. So it was, it was March thirteenth was the day I did the drawings. I might have handed them in the next day, the fourteenth.
Perfect. That's all we need. Thank you.
Down below on the page number, it says March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three. If you if you would scroll down, you'll see the date.
Great, okay.
All right. And Mister K., just to the left of the proposed golf.
Right there, right there, right.
Just to the left of, am I correct that of the pavilion, there's a little square just where your cursor is? Is that the so-called storage shed for the tables?
That is the small one. I have, I have a, an example photograph of it when we're done with it, with this page, this page, okay?
All right. Fair enough. And again, does that have lights or or plumbing or anything in it in the storage shed?
No, 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 it doesn't.
Okay, and would I be correct that the public, again, would not be going into that?
Public would not be going in only for employees.
Very well. Okay, are there any other features of the of the project that, you know, you'd like to tell the board about?
Well, I I want to, I want to show a little bit. Hold on, let's see if I can make this thing smaller. Here we go. So here is the shed. Here is the shed. Let me make this bigger again. I'm sorry. Here is the maintenance area, which is on, not on the road of the clubhouse. It's on a road perpendicular to it. I don't know the name of the road off the top of my head. I'm sorry. These are the two current entrances into this maintenance area. You can see equipment here. There's equipment here. This right here is where the building is going to be, behind all these trees. You know, hardly, you're not going to see it in the summertime when the leaves are out. That's where this building right here, then I'm moving the cursor, storage, the simple storage building will be right here.
Okay.
Okay, now let me go to this page. If I could zoom in on this, this would be a little bit more accurate on the saw, of the size of of these plans. Okay, the the storage building, Mark, is thirty-two by seventy. You see it here, seventy by thirty-two. And the pavilion is thirty-seven by seventy-four. I I was a little high in my numbers, seventy-four by thirty-seven.
Can you identify the page number of the plans, please?
That's page, page number three.
Thank you.
Page number three. There's only three pages.
Okay.
Any other features you'd like to tell them about? I understand that there's going to be some.
Well, we're re-landscaping around the clubhouse with newer plans. Some of the plans are very old. They've been there twenty, thirty years. So it's going to be re-landscaped to look nicer around around the entire clubhouse, not just where the pavilion is, but the entire clubhouse is going to get re-landscaped.
Okay.
And I, you, I'll, Mark, you want me to go to the picture of the shed?
Sure, yes, why don't you do that?
So here's this, here, here's where the shed is going to be. I do want to go back to this picture for a second, only for you to remember. You see this color of the wood?
Yep.
I'm not sure what color that is. I'm just going to say it's a yellowish color, okay? A yellowish pine or something like that. So the next thing I want to bring up is this. Now, I'm not sure. Did you just get another photograph of something or you didn't? I think you didn't. You didn't. All right, all right. Okay, here is what the shed is going to look like, except it's not going to be that dark brown. It's going to be that yellower color, yellow or gold. It's going to be an exact match of the pavilion.
Mister K., let's mark that because it wasn't in the package.
Yeah, I didn't realize that 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 was that we needed anything for that. And I sort of, it's such a small little building, we might not even put it in right away. It might come later. I didn't even think of that when I did it.
I just want to mark, I want to just mark the exhibit for the record. It's A one is a is a photograph of the shed you brought.
Great.
Mark, I couldn't quite make out everything she said.
Yeah, it's going to be marked for the record. It's A one. Okay, they know what this picture is of, but your point was the color is going to match the same color as.
Exactly right.
Right. Okay. Um, unless there are any other points, Mister K., that you'd like to make, we can certainly invite the board to ask us and ask you in particular, any questions they might have about this.
I'm going to go back to this plan here, okay? Any questions?
Yes, I'm going to start off. So the maintenance storage shed photo, there's no lights in there. What happens if somebody goes in for something at night?
That generally wasn't, it wasn't going to happen. They generally, they don't work at night. They they generally, I think, and Tim, I don't know if Tim's still on the on the thing, but I think they normally work three o'clock because they start very early in the morning. They start at dawn and they work till about three o'clock. I don't see anybody going in at in the at nighttime.
Does this shed need by code emergency lighting, just in case, battery apparatus emergency lighting, just in case, or no?
I I would not know.
Okay. So we'll have to ask one of our experts if it does later on. Okay, do any members of the board have any questions? We'll start off with Vice Chairman Wilks.
Um, no questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mayor McCartney.
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Council President Williams.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. I had the same inquiry as you as regarding emergency lighting in the event someone does need to access the property during the darker evening hours. Thank you.
Okay, Mister Guarino.
No questions at this time, Mister Chairman, thank you.
Mister Klein.
No questions.
Mister Morgan.
No questions.
Mister Smeraldo.
Just one question. The the storage, is there going to be flammable, combustibles, things of that nature, and you plan on putting in any kind of cabinetry to prevent any ignition with the equipment?
No, it it's just the equipment, and yes, I mean, obviously, the equipment is either going to have gasoline or diesel in it, but storage of of the gasoline is in the gasoline tanks. And then there's another building there that stores chemicals, fertilizers, and other things. This is strictly going to be mowers and tractors.
All right, thank you. No other questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mister Jensen.
Um, just one question. The small shed by the pavilion, I don't believe I heard you mention what kind of base that sits on.
That's going to be on the same basic, same concrete slab that the pavilion is going to be on.
Okay, thank you.
Mister Cardoza.
I have no questions, Mister Chairman.
Okay, is the public advocate with Mister Thapar?
Thank you. I just want to follow up on one question that Chairman Bagoff was asking. I know you said that they'll be done by three P M. What time will they, you said they started around dawn?
Normal maintenance of a golf course, any golf course, including Francis Byrne, most of the time in the summertime, maintenance crews, whether it's this golf course or Hendrix or Boulter's Row, they start generally when the sun's coming up and they're generally done by three o'clock because they got to mow and do everything in front of the golfers. They have to get, they got to get ahead of the golfers or they can't get any work done.
So you don't anticipate any going into the golf, into the shed before dawn? Let's say they have to start earlier, anything like that, four, five A M. in the morning?
No, no.
Okay. No further questions, thanks.
Thank you. Assistant Township Engineer Carvalho, do you have any questions?
Ah, yes, I do. Good evening, everyone. My first question to the professional is the proposed addition to the golf course pavilion as well as the main and storage shed, they are in close proximity to the east branch of the Roe Way River as well as to one of the its tributaries. Have you obtained permits from N J D P Division of Land?
My, my engineer had that it was, it was, I I think he, he did apply for some permits. I know he applied for soil and erosion control. And and he, I know that my engineer who unfortunately had to go back to Jamaica because his first cousin passed away. So he was not able to be on the call. But he said that he had, he applied for all the permits that were needed. That's what he told me that that we, whatever it was needed, he's applied for. By the way, I just got a text from Tim Chris. I guess he could hear, but he can't speak. He said there are no chemicals in the storage building, but they are going to install like they did at Hendrick's solar lights in the colds in the storage building. So there will be some solar lights, just solar powered, not wired, just solar, solar lights.
Okay. Mister Carvalho, do you have any other questions?
Thanks. No. Okay, so the permits have been obtained from the Division of Land Use because typically the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection will have jurisdiction.
Again, I'm sorry that I can't answer that. I don't think that we had to go to the state. The only, what, if I remember correctly, the engineer said the only permit we needed was soil and erosion control, which is, which is what? That's like a dual county Hudson Essex thing. It's not, we're not talking about the the D E P in Trenton.
Yes, the the Soil Conservation District is for anything with a five thousand square feet of disturbance or greater.
And we have applied for that. I'm not sure if we, I, I'm pretty sure we might even gotten that permit already.
If the permit has been obtained and if it's submitted?
I I'll double check tomorrow if we've gotten it.
Because typically, and according with the flood hazard area rules of all of the.
We were not, we were not in the flood. That that I specifically asked. We were not in in the flooded area. We were not in the flood plain or the floodway. And I asked that question. We were not.
Uh, any other questions? Mister Carvalho.
Candy, is there a reason why the trees start to be removed are not shown near the proximity of the proposed shed?
There, there are no tree, really trees there. There, it's just filled with shrubs. There's wild privet in there. There's a lot of Rosa Ragusa, wild rose, a lot of poison ivy. There is no significant tree, anything more than four inches in size that's growing in there. You know, there's no maple, no maples, no oaks, no, nothing in there. It's just brush.
Okay. Is there any proposed strong water management for the increasing impervious surface?
Say that again?
Will you be, will the project be providing any strong water management for the increase in impervious surfaces?
I, it's very, I think it's, it's, it was handled in the soil and erosion control permit that a Besrick plumber put in, my engineer, that it wasn't increasing water runoff supposedly. I I I did not do the calculations on that, and again, I'm sorry, he's not on the phone.
Okay, no further questions.
Thank you. Do any members of the public have any questions for Mister K. about his testimony? Do any members of the public have any questions for Mister K. about his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Mister Chairman, I am seeing none.
Okay. Thank you, Mister K. for your testimony. Mister Flader.
You're welcome. Um, we appreciate your attention and 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 your questions. We will, as far as the county is concerned, that includes our presentation for the purposes of the Courtesy Review. And obviously, the the matter presumably will now proceed in the ordinary course with building permit application and so on.
Okay, thank you. Do any members of the public have any comments on this application? Do any members of the public have any comments on this application? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Mister Chairman, I am seeing none.
Okay, that will close this, the public portion of the comments. Thank you. Okay, so Miss Burney, things that I I would recommend to put into our resolution is that the soil-water district permit be sent to Miss Carvalho and any and all other permits required by the county or state be sent to me, or the EPA be sent to Miss Carvalho for our records.
Absolutely. Would you like a statement perhaps from the engineer that in fact certain permits are not required?
Yes. Absolutely.
Yeah, so any permits, just to review, because you're breaking up a little bit on me, any permits we have, send copies to you all, and if we don't need a permit, have that on either the engineer's letterhead or my letterhead that those. On, on either the engineer's letterhead or my letterhead, that those permits are not needed.
Prefer the, the engineer's letterhead, please.
Okay, okay, but again, he's not gonna get back, he said till Tuesday or Wednesday last week, he flew out this morning for this funeral.
That's okay, when he gets back, or he or she gets back, that's fine. Okay, do any members of the board have any questions or discussion? Do any members of the board have any questions or discussion? I'll take that as a no. That's good, I like that. What is that, silence is acquiescence? Okay, sorry, I just have to get on my paperwork, I'm here, and.
No.
No? Silence is not acquiescence?
I see, do I wait to hear somebody say no, so.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Mr. Jensen. Okay, so. Have, having said that, I recommend that we uh. Thank the uh, county for the presentation. Uh, PB twenty-three dash oh-three SS County Francis Burn Golf Course, eleven hundred Pleasant Valley Way. Uh, block one fifty-seven dot oh-one, lot eleven, zone R two. To add an open air pavilion by the golf courses clubhouse, they had a small twenty-two hundred four, forty square foot storage shed. By the existing maintenance building off the Mount Pleasant Avenue. Now, you also added one of the structure. A smaller structure. That doesn't seem to be on here. Is that correct, Mr. Flader?
The, the answer is yes, there's that little tiny shed right next to the pavilion.
It, it's actually, it's actually on the plan, but I didn't have a photograph of it.
Okay, but I'm saying the, the application, so, Mr. Flader, I'm just gonna ask you for completeness, to amend the application. Or, Ms. Byrne, can we just amend the, the uh, application this way, by saying it?
Yeah, orally, um, ask if the applicant wants to do that, and, and the chair has the discretion. If it's minor, to accept that amendment, if he chose.
Mr. Flader, will you just amend this now?
That, yes, our request would be that you consider the application to be amended by adding that one. Small storage shed right next to the pavilion.
Okay, the chair accepts on behalf of the board, thank you, Mr. Flader. Uh, and based on the testimony of uh, Mr. Kay, the land, uh, the. Golf course architect. And with the uh, request for. All permits that were required and a note from the engineer of permits that are not required to Ms. Cabalo. Um, we recommend, whatever you wanna say, uh, Ms. Byrne, whatever the official wordings are. And I need a second.
Recommend consent, yeah.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Mr. Guarino seconds. Yamalat on the uh, motion.
Uh, Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mrs. Smeraldo?
Yes. Yes.
Oh, sorry, Council President Williams?
Yes.
Mayor McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Wilks?
Yes.
Chairman Baggar?
Yes, motion carries. Mr. Flader, thank you, Mr. Kay, thank you for your testimony, have a wonderful day.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, and the next order of business before this august body.
I believe your, your regular council is going to be, there she is, Ms. McGovern is back on.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alice.
And they will be getting into.
Okay, we'll say goodnight, thank you all again.
Right. The board thanks Ms. Byrne, uh, Esquire for her help in this application and welcomes back Ms. McGovern.
Alright, good night.
Good night, good evening. Okay, we now have an ordinance review sent down by the town council. Uh, basically, these are, if you read the uh, letter. From Mr. Greigle, these are basically moving uh, ordinances that have to do with uh, fees. Uh, to a difference from chapter twenty-five, which is our chapter, to another chapter in the general ordinances. So, does anybody have any questions? I'll, I'll read this, the, uh, this is a letter of March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. From Mr. Greigle, um. The Township Council introduced twenty proposed ordinances in its March twenty-first, twenty twenty-three meeting. Each of these ordinances amends a section of the Township Code related to fees. With the only substantive changes to remove the specific regarding the fees from the ordinance and indicate the fees will be prescribed by resolution. It is noted sixteen of these ordinances pertain to chapter twenty-five, the land use regulation ordinance. The other four amend chapters one and fourteen, general housing, general and housing respectively. The MLUL defines a development regulation as a zoning ordinance, subdivision ordinance. Site plan ordinance, official map ordinance, or other municipal regulation of the use and development of land. Or amendment thereto adopted and filed pursuant to the MLUL. Therefore, the planning board's review is for the amendments to chapter twenty-five. And Mr. Greigle notes that he has reviewed this and is consistent with the master plan. Uh, the setting of fees is not addressed in the West Orange Master Plan, and it shall go to another portion of our ordinances. So, uh, does anybody have any questions? Or comments?
No.
Okay, I'm going to ask, uh, Ms. McGovern, did I, did I uh, describe this appropriately for the record? And can we vote on this going forward?
You can vote on it as a package, um, the. The or, only the ordinances that begin with chapter twenty-five are the ones that pertain to this board's review. Um, and so you all have that package, I could put it in the report detailing each. Ordinance that is part of this, um, but it's all the same principle, so uh, there's no, I don't think there's any need to do each one individually.
Okay, uh, if any member of the board has an objection, speak now. Seeing none, we will do this as a packet. So I make a motion that we approve uh, the moving of the ordinances as indicated from chapter twenty-five. Uh, to the general ordinances as indicated in the uh, recommendation from the Township Council. Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, who was that?
Uh, Smeraldo.
Oh, Mr. Smeraldo seconds. Yamalat on the motion.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mrs. Smeraldo?
Yes.
Council President Williams?
Yes.
Mayor McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Wilks?
Yes.
Chairman Baggar?
Yes, motion carries. Outstanding. Like this stuff. Okay, does anybody have anything to discuss? Seeing none, this is a good thing. Uh. Then I will say the next regular planning board meeting will be held on April twelfth, two thousand twenty-three. At seven thirty P M via Zoom. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion, decline.
Decline motions, I second the motion, all in favor? No, the eyes are above the nose. And for all that who observe holidays, please have a happy and a healthy holiday to you and your family in the coming weeks.
Yeah, have a good evening, everyone.
See you in two weeks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, thank you.